Kids, huh?
Not after Saturday.
No?
What were you thinking, Mario?
We were just doing slow dating on this. Hundred percent.
Yeah.
And which sort of has. Are you just going to be. I don't know if you can put aside or not. They'll probably just steal it. Yeah, where they don't get it after that.
Do they have any ventures out there?
Kids, huh?
Not after Saturday.
No? Where were you staking, Mario?
We were just doing slow dating on this. Hundred percent.
Yeah.
And which sort of has. Are you just going to be. I don't have. This is your job. Yeah. Coming on. But. I'm not going to do one.
You know?
But it's. And if he does it, that's perfectly fine, too. Well, that's just it. There's a. There's so many other avenues you could go down and still be involved. Not all about putting wood in the ground. It's just a small.
We'll call the Tuesday, September sixth, two thousand twenty-two Stark County meeting to order. We'll start with the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, we have the agenda. Are there any ratifications to the agenda? Anybody can see, or what? We talked about that at the park board meeting earlier at eight thirty, but we can add it again. And then we also, I would like to add the Stark County Council aging. The Stark County Council aging, of aging. Are there any more ratifications? Not motion to approve the agenda.
I would move to approve as amended.
Okay, approved and seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. The minutes. The minutes from the August second, two thousand and twenty-two. Meeting, are there any corrections?
Motion to approve.
Okay, we have a motion in a second on the minutes, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Accounts payable. Are there any?
We have August fourth and August.
Sorry. The minutes from the August eighteenth, two thousand and twenty-two County Commission meeting, are there?
Let's do the August fourth.
August fourth, two thousand and twenty-two meeting? Are there any corrections? If not, may I have a motion?
I'll make that motion to approve August fourth minutes.
On second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carried. Then we have the unofficial minutes from August eighteenth, two thousand twenty-two. Are there any corrections?
I'll make a motion, accept August eighteen, two thousand twenty-two minutes.
Second.
Moved and seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carried. Now we'll go into accounts payable. Are there any questions on the bills?
Karen, I've got a quick question for you. On House Bill fifteen oh five, when a bill comes in, you pay that, those bills directly out of that account rather than go into the road account and through?
It's connected, but it has its own line item.
Okay.
In the road account, so.
All right, thanks.
I had a question in the Sheriff's Department. Vehicle expense alleged in auto body for thirty-two twenty-six.
Are there any more questions? If not, need a motion to approve the bills and continue, and the continued.
I'll move to approve the bills as presented.
And you're adding the continued?
And the, yep, the resolution, yep.
Okay. Do I have a second?
On second.
Roll call vote. Commissioner Messer.
Aye.
Commissioner Franchek.
Aye.
Commissioner Marsh.
Aye.
Commissioner Zander.
Aye.
Chair votes aye, motion carried. Linda Carlson and Abby Ritz. Certification of community.
Good morning, Commissioners.
Morning.
I am Linda Carlson, and I'm representing the library right now, the Dickinson area library, and what, in your packet, there is a certification of community letter there, and with me is Abby Ritz, our funding specialist from E two S, and she's going to give a little bit of explanation of what that community letter actually does for us.
Right, so anytime you apply through USDA role development, they require you to get that certification of community service, or support, excuse me, and, and there's no obligation on the county's behalf, basically, it's just stating that generally you support the project and it's not in conflict with any county plans. So at this stage, we're asking for approval and signature of that letter for our application package.
Do you not have it, Karen?
The letter that I got was an example. Don't I need to type one up for?
No, it, it was the actual letter, but I can, I can definitely send you another one.
Okay, then I have it in my email. I thought it was just an example that I needed to retype.
Nope, that's.
Okay.
It's a form we fill out and you just need a signature at the bottom there.
It looks like that.
Oh, okay. Yep, I do have that then in my email.
Yeah, I, I remember scanning it into you, and actually, I had filled out some of the information in there, just putting Stark County Commissioners and on there and stuff for you, but if you don't have it, Karen, just let me know and I will do it again.
I should have it, yeah.
Okay. That's the letter that we're talking about. It's just a, it's support letter and just saying that, as Abby stated, that there is no conflict with any other plans or anything that the county may have to support the Dickinson area library with this USDA loan and stuff. That's what it's about. So with that, I appreciate it if you would sign that and for that. Do you want me to stand here for the next one, since I'm on the next one? Sure.
Do we have to make a motion to sign that, or what?
Yeah, we could. I would move, I would move that we authorize the chair to sign the certification of communities letter to.
I'll second that.
Okay, discussion? I think the letter, since none of us have seen it, I think the letter should go up to Amanda, just to make sure.
I can take a look at it. You want to just amend it to signature after I.
Sure.
Okay, I'll do that.
I'll second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
I appreciate that very much. Very much. Sit down, wait for the next one.
What do you have?
I'm on the next. Support for library expansion.
You can just, I'm sorry, you can keep going. You can keep going.
Okay, I am asking for the library I had presented before for the Commission of Stark County, if they would be allowable to help with the expansion and the payment of the USDA loan. My proposal from before, back in, in August or July, when I was here, was that with the budgets coming up, I had asked for three hundred thousand for the next ten years, and that would help support the payment of the USDA loan. The city has already committed the three million dollars upfront, so that is being used right now, except for the two hundred and fifty on that, that we are going to use for the payment, that's set aside for payments. So then with this Stark County coming across with help for the payment of the expansion, then other counties, Dunn, Slope, Billings, are all in the process of looking at their budgets, because all budgets are due in the first part of October, so they're also looking at that, so I'm going back around and asking for a commitment, if I can, in your budget on that.
What's the total on the project?
The project, right now, it, for phase one, is seven point six million dollars. The USDA loan that we're looking at is from five to seven million, I think, believe, five to seven million on that. So that's what we are looking for.
And in a USDA loan, what's the interest rate that they charge you?
I will have Abby help with that.
Right, so USDA has fixed interest rates, but they adjust every quarter, and so the final interest rate will depend on when we close on the loan. Right now, they're at three and a quarter percent.
And so then it's broken down into ten-year payments? Is that what you're asking for?
We can, the loan can go from ten years to forty years. When we close, we're going to try to get out as much as we can with the commitment that we have. I don't want to go out forty years if we can do a payment in twenty or twenty-five years or thirty years. So that's what we're looking for, is the commitment to be able to handle the payment, so, on that funding. So that's what we're looking for.
And is this?
Even a ten-year commitment on our, that's a long ways out.
It's hard for the commission to make a, more than a two-year commitment because of a rollover for county commissioners, you know, with the election.
Right.
So we don't usually like to go past two.
In the very beginning, May, June, when it was, I had asked for, when the ARPA money came in, for a full commitment of the three million dollars, because it was presented to the city as if, if the city committed three million dollars, then come in front of the Stark County Commission and with their ARPA money and ask, and you asked me to go back and, and look at what we can do, once the funding, we knew where the funding was going to be, what the phase amount was going to be, and so we've been proposing now is a span of the money is what we're looking for, if that would help. I mean, I would take the three million right away if that was possible, but I know with budgeting, I totally understand that. You have to be able to commit what you, what you say you're going to commit to, so I'm giving options, but just looking for support. Commissioner Zander?
Your earlier comment, you mentioned phase one, is there?
Yep, the total, the total was fifteen million dollars, and we did phase one as the expansion to be able to more space for the books, community rooms and everything. What phase two did was get more office space in there, more supply space in the outside and everything, that's phase two. We need the expansion of the books and to be able to have the community space. Right now, our numbers are exploding at the library. I don't know if you've ever seen the report from the library when she comes in here on annual, but when we dropped in twenty and twenty-one with the, with the COVID that came through, COVID turned that library around to be virtual. We shut the doors, but we did curbside, but they expanded their, all their programs virtually and stuff, and now that the doors are open, the numbers have exploded that they want both now. They want the virtual, they want the programs in hand, they want to be able to do it. Our adult reading program and our children's reading program was up forty-eight percent just in twenty-two. And so with that, we know we need it, and what we've done right now, just to help the expansion right now, is you notice there was a lot of chairs to be able to sit down in the, in the children's and in the adults and stuff. We took a lot of them out, restoring them, because we need room for the expansion of the books and, and the digital things that we need for our community and community area. So right now, it's busting at the seams, you might want to say.
So now with the expansion stuff and this money that you're looking at, is that, I would think it does not, but does that include hiring new people and, because you're, as you expand, you're going to need more people in there, and is there a plan for that end of business plan end of it, as far as how many people you need to hire and how are you going to pay for that?
Actually, then, in our budget for this year, we've got a new teen librarian added on to it. We feel we have enough people right now, as far as the expansion goes. We have a, really a good team of part-time seasonal limited librarians, and that, that fulfills a lot of our hours and things like that, but we did need a full-time teen librarian, because that is exploding right now, as far as our programs. We have the children programming and the adult program, and the children librarian was doing both teen and stuff, and now we've broke the children's down into two areas, so we have an assistant with our children, but we need a teen librarian, and that is being proposed in our budget for the city.
That's a city budget then at that point.
Exactly. So those costs and things are all ready, coming forward for the expansion to go forward. We are already preparing for that.
Well, I mean, the expansion of the library, I mean, it's inevitable, it has to happen for the way our community is growing and the work that they do. I just, yep.
They, both the culturels of the library and the museum from the city side has really exploded, just being that the TR library is coming into Midori, the lot of people are just doing a lot of the visitation of in-home, or I should say, inner-city, that they want to be able to do this and stuff, and just like your report that you, Lisa, gave this morning, there was a big crowd this weekend and doing the activities of the PBR and everything that's coming through here. It's, Dickinson is growing. It's just expanding completely. So we're hoping with that, we can have the support of all the counties and the city to be able to help support this expansion of this library.
And then for the counties, for other county supports, what kind of money are you looking for from?
Actually, we're, they're, they're actually waiting on you. I've gone to a couple of them and they said, well, what's the county going to do and what's the city doing? Well, I can, I can commit to what the city's doing, but I can't commit to anything else, and they're just kind of waiting, but this is, this month is my month to hit all of them before the October fourth, you know, we get into the last budget session. So I'm, that's where it's at. They're, everybody's considering it, they just need to know what they need to do.
It's very important.
So.
Just, um, just.
I can't give that answer.
Quick question for you, Linda. So the repayment of the loan is, starts upon the final, or the final construction, or is it starting? I mean, so if you're asking for, I don't know where we're going as a board, but if you're asking for three hundred thousand annually, what year is that being funded in? Is that twenty-three, twenty-four, twenty-five?
Of course.
Because you're not done with that construction, and typically, you wouldn't make payments on a loan that you haven't.
Correct. Yes, we will close on the loan at the end of project construction. It kind of depends on when the city decides to move forward and break ground, because at this stage, we are applying to USDA to secure our funding. You get a letter of conditions, basically outlining your terms, and from that stage, USDA gives us five years to move forward with the project, so they can say, at the most, you will pay this interest rate with this payment. If USDA's interest rates go down, they will reduce your interest rate. So, you know, if, if the city has all of its partnerships and its funding, you know, set up, we could potentially, within the next year, and then.
Start your construction.
Start construction and then close.
And what's the timetable on construction?
It actually was a year.
A single season?
Find the time, you get everything.
Yep.
Okay, so.
Probably two years then.
Yep.
So more than likely, this would be a.
Twenty-three, twenty-four.
This would be a twenty-four deal, more than likely, okay. So since you're involved in the city, then, so how is the city paying their share of the commitment? Is it sales tax? Is, what is it?
Thirty percent of the sales tax. That's the capital projects for economic growth in the south, in Dickinson area, southwest area, so that's what the ballot language states, so it's the thirty percent of the one percent sales tax.
Of the, of the one being proposed, or the one that's currently in?
The one that's currently in, right now.
Okay.
Yes.
Okay, and we don't have a sales tax, obviously, countywide. Okay, thank you.
No. So with that.
So with the grant system, is that, has there been any grants or anything available for the library?
No, we're working through the USDA is what we qualify for, for that community development grant loan.
It's a grant loan. You don't have any grants?
No. No.
No, unfortunately, USDA doesn't provide much grant funding through that program.
Okay.
And there is, we have, we've gone out for some other grants. We can go out for specifics to like the Spacemaker places, you know, like for the areas of programming, we can go out for that once it's established. Then we can go out for grant programming for those areas, just like we do now at this current time. We go out for a lot of the grant programming for that once we have it, but not for developing the construction. The USDA grant community loan is our best bet for short-term, excuse me, for a amount of money for the interest rate that it's going to be at.
And I can't remember when you were up here last, if I had asked or we had talked about, did you, have you done any capital campaign around the Dickinson area or businesses that would donate to the library?
Yeah, actually, the Library Foundation Board has, their donation is the land, they have provided the land, but other than that, we haven't done anything as far as public campaign. There is notions of campaigning money coming through once we get through what we're doing. It, just like Commissioner Messer, a lot of them are waiting for the ground to break and to see where we're going to go with this. A lot of your campaigns help better when the ground is being broke and stuff. With this USDA loan, we, like she said, we have five years. If we can't get the money together, or if we can't get the sponsorship together for this, we don't owe a dime. The, the loan just goes away and stuff, so we, the city's already put in all the money, we put up that three million dollars, so we are using that money right now for the design projects and all the preliminary designs and everything, the skeptics and scopings and everything else that we need. We're using that right now to be able to go forward with that, so that money's being spent right now so that we can go forward, but if this doesn't go forward and stuff, this, nobody's out any, any dime. The loan just goes away on that, so that's why we're trying to structure, can we get the loan and can we get the support for the loan? Because I'm not going to go and say, yes, we're going to go for a loan, and then all of a sudden, the day that it comes due, then everybody wants to be able to bring money forward and we don't have the money. So that's, that's why I'm bringing it forward now. I'm trying to pre-plan on this. So if, any other questions? I will leave it at that, because I know it's a budget item, and I know that the Commissioners have that preliminary budgets and in your proposed budgets. So I just wanted to bring it forward as food for thought again, and if you need anything, definitely email me or whatever you need on, on that. I appreciate all your time. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Sheriff's report?
Chairman Commissioners, good morning. The August highlights for Stark County Sheriff's Department are as follows. Total calls for service is one thousand six hundred and fifty-six. This is up from one thousand six hundred and twenty-five last year. There's two hundred ninety-seven traffic stops. This is up from two hundred eighty-nine last year. Ninety of those stops from the city of Dickinson and two hundred and seven were in the county and neighboring small towns. Two hundred PR stops, this is down from two hundred fifty last year. Ten bar checks, this is up from six. Eleven theft-related calls for service, that's up from seven. Fifty-three K nine usages. Transports, there's eleven prisoner, twenty-one court, one juvenile, two medical, six mental health and one for another agency. Responded to eleven accidents. Of those, zero pedestrian, zero fatality, zero hit and run, two injury and nine property. There's ninety-seven total arrests for the month of August. And August, as always, is a busy month for us. We had, in addition to our events at the fairgrounds, we had Harvest tow down in Bellfield, we had Little Opryland days in Richardson, we participated in a drug interdiction response team operation on a Thursday and Friday night. The results of that operation are on our Facebook page, if you want to take a look at that. Of course, we had the armed robbery up at the County Line Truck Stop. That case is still under investigation. Our sexual assault and abuse cases are up exponentially. Megan Winish is getting very good at working those and clearing those. To her credit, she's doing an amazing job. Lucky to have her. We had a, last month, we had a transport from California, and this month, or in August, we had one from Las Vegas. Those are always pleasant. Schools are back in session. That went out with, went off without a hitch, or SROs are already quite busy. Over the weekend, we had a fatality accident up on Fortieth and State. Two vehicles, a gentleman who I'm quite close with, in his twenties, passed away after being flown to Bismarck. Any questions?
When you do these transports like from Las Vegas and stuff, I mean, does somebody, you send somebody there to, somebody coming, do you put them on a plane? How does that work?
Typically, we prefer to fly. There's instances where we can't, but yeah, we work closely with the other agencies who typically are housing the prisoner, and usually, they're pretty good about getting him to the airport, so we don't have to go to the prison or jail as it is and pick them up.
So you fly, somebody from Dickinson flies, or Stark County flies there?
Yes.
Meets them and rings them back?
Correct. In a perfect situation, yes.
That's interesting. And the ones that you can't fly, you have to physically drive them?
Yes.
Drive somebody there and drive them back?
Correct.
Or do you, or do you fly there and rent a car and come back? What do you do?
No, we've never had to do it that way. Either we'll take a transport vehicle and drive to the location, or we fly. Like I said, it's our preference to fly, because
Right.
it's almost the same price or cheaper at this juncture.
Interesting.
Anything else? Thank you.
Thank you.
County Road, Mr. Heiser.
Well, good morning, everyone. The road crew, we're now down in the tater country, gravelling down there. We started over in the western part of the county this spring. We're migrating away to the east. Lots of dust out there. I tell you what, you know, we've got a lot of water trucks, just with our trucks, just trying to keep the dust down, so hopefully, we'll get some Mother Nature to give us a hand here pretty quick, because it's, it's pretty tough. Todd's got a couple guys with him. We're taking out a bunch of old bridges, culverts that are rusted out. That's going pretty well. I'll let our engineers talk about our project we're currently working on, but we have a real issue arising in Stark County. People are stealing signs. I mean, it's, one night, they got away with like five, six stop signs, curb signs, speed limit signs. You know, stop signs are there for a reason. And it's very unfortunate. They actually took a stop sign down and hung a Walmart shopping cart where the stop sign was. Last week, one of the farmer ranchers was hauling hay, and he caught a pickup backed up to a sign, but he couldn't catch up to him fast enough to get a license plate. By the time we called the Sheriff Department, you know, they're, they're gone and flashed, so. I visited with Amanda last week. I'd like to post a thousand dollar reward out to, I think it's enough to shake some of them, maybe get it out. This weekend, on our project on Hundred Seventh Avenue, they took a bunch of signs from there and just started throwing them in ditches everywhere, stole sandbags, signs, so I would venture to say it's probably the same crew that's doing it. They actually stole our loader out of the gravel pit. We had the key hidden pretty hard. And they picked it up when joyriding with it and we found it about five miles from the pit this morning. So mischievous going on. So I, and like I said, Amanda thought it would probably be okay if, if the county could do that. We could take it out of one of our line items miscellaneous or art permits or something. But we've got to do something because we can't have stop signs stolen. That's, that's a bad, bad deal. They're there for a reason, like I said. So if we could get that accomplished and I don't know, I'll get with the sheriff. We can get it to Crime Stoppers or how he wants, how we want to put it out there in the public. I'm not sure, but we have to do something. It's getting, it's getting, every week there's something going on.
And just to, I guess, give you some more information. I think it's fine because obviously the county has a vested interest in the safety of the citizens driving those roads. Without stop signs, you're going to start seeing some nasty accidents, fatalities. That puts the county at liability at risk as well. The other thing that we can do if, you know, there's a successful prosecution regarding this is we can certainly ask for those funds back in restitution. So I, I think that there's no issue using the funds. Actually think it's probably a good idea because the safety of the county should be our concern. And, and just from a legal liability standpoint, I think it's a, when you don't have those stop signs up, we really become, we really have some issues.
Is a thousand dollars enough of an incentive or do we need to go to twenty-five hundred?
That's what I was thinking.
I'm not sure. I'm just throwing it out there for.
Excuse me.
Yes, Commissioner Zander.
Make a motion to set a twenty-five hundred dollar.
Reward?
Reward for information and prosecution of parties responsible for theft of property, stop signs.
Equipment, whatever.
Whatever, directional signs. And that pending the approval of our state's attorney for the language on that particular reward.
You have a motion? Do you have a second?
I'll second that. Just a quick question. So the reward would, is kind of, you make a determination how valid the plea is and the reward's based on that. How does that work?
I think it should probably be contingent on a, you know, like a successful prosecution or.
You know, maybe in addition to my motion, I might add that the reward be administered by the state's attorney's office.
I'll amend my second to that.
Wouldn't the award go through the, like, Crime Stoppers and?
I, I think we'll let, you know, the sheriff should be able to take that and get that handled somehow to the proper channels. I mean, I.
We'll work together. We'll get it out there. We'll get the information out there. And then, you know, like I said, based on, I think successful prosecution is the way to go. But that, we can talk about that. The one thing I don't want to happen is for Sheriff Lee and Mr. Heiser to get flooded with just a bunch of junk information. And then the sheriff's offices running around chasing information that is not pertinent, so.
Well, I just, my feeling was is that your office is in a much better place to determine whether information is good information versus hearsay type stuff information. And so being, part of my motion is that it be administered through the state's attorney's office.
So you're saying that any people that want to present the lead has to go to the state's attorney instead of going to the sheriff?
The determination of awarding.
Well, that would depend on prosecution. If we prosecute them and be successful, then the reward would go out.
Well, and that's what they do.
Yeah.
Okay.
So, I mean, depending on how you word it, by default, it's probably going to run through my office anyways.
Sure. All right. That's all I have. Thank you.
Um, Al?
Yes.
I also added to there.
We need to, can we? Okay, there was a motion and a second on a twenty-five hundred dollar reward on the signs or anything that is county-owned to work with Amanda and then Amanda will work with the sheriff's department. I'll do a roll call vote. Commissioner Zander.
Aye.
Commissioner Marsh.
Aye.
Commissioner Messer.
Aye.
Commissioner Franchek.
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Motion carried.
Al, I also added the email we got from Kenneth Steiner for the Upper Great Plains Transportation Institute. They just want a letter of support from the county.
I've already taken care of that.
You already wrote the letter and everything? Oh, okay.
It's sent.
I didn't know if you needed me to, so, okay. Well, then that's good.
We're good.
Okay.
All right.
Thank you, Al.
Thank you.
Interstate Engineering, James Catermus.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Just a brief update on Thirty-Eighth Street Box Culvert. Ninety percent plans have been reviewed and shared with Superintendent Heiser. We have not yet received our draft environmental document from the department with their comments. This will push our bid date back into February of next year. Any questions on that?
That's a twenty-three construction, correct?
That's our hope. Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you. Highland Engineering, Mike?
Good morning, everybody.
Good morning.
So in August, we've got some good news from the DOT. They distributed their bridge funding and two of the applications we put in for, that Highlands put in for, for the county, received funding. And one of those projects is a three bridge removal with replacement of low water crossings. Kind of in the north, between north of Richardson and north of Gladstone. So the design engineering phase will be federally funded also. So the county issued an RFP for this work and proposals are due on September ninth. So the preliminary in design engineering will also be federally funded. So some good news. I'll talk about the other project here later on. Again, on the update, haven't got much of an update on the bridge replacement project southeast of Richardson on Eightieth. They don't have a box culvert manufacturer date yet, but it's most likely twenty, well, it'll be twenty-twenty-three. Construction completion date is October first, so. And the other funding project, last on my list there is the, the one on Eighty-third Avenue Southwest, northwest of Richardson, we receive funding on. And we're working, we, I submitted the preliminary environmental document to the DOT and core permit's going to be submitted. So that'll be probably bid this winter, February or so. So. And construction, depending upon the box culvert manufacturer date, might push it into twenty-twenty-four construction, so. That's all I got for an update. Somebody have any questions?
Thank you.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Highland Engineering. No, I'm sorry, that's you. Northern Plains, please. Jeremy Wood.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Just a few brief updates. Construction projects, the Thirty-Eighth Street Bridge by Duane Sattler's is done. We recommended the final payment, so that should be the last time you see that on our list. So that, that's done. Eighty-third and Eighty-sixth, the DOT-funded project, got started a couple of weeks ago. Martin Construction is looking at setting that box culvert on the north side or by Gebharts later this week perhaps. So I would think that's probably a mid-October completion date for, for both sites. But that one, that one's off and running. The Stark County paving project, we recommended pay estimate to Mayo Construction. That's complete with the exception of some punchless items that they have to do. But that one's mostly done. Thirty-second and One-O-seventh, north and east of Dickinson, that got started a couple of weeks ago. They got about, about one mile of the six and a half miles graded out. So that one, I think, is going fairly well. As far as design projects, the Hundred Thirty-first Bridge Projects by Bellfield, one is north, one is south of Bellfield. Those are slated for twenty-twenty-three construction with a November bid opening date. Still working with the DOT in securing the four oh four permit, but we don't think there's any issues. It just has to go through the process. One Twenty-seventh, still working with the DOT on potentially some environmental work on that project. And I guess in the miscellaneous column, we have the annual conference with Association of Counties. We've scheduled a time to meet with the DOT for Monday, October third at one fifteen, which is central time. So usually it's, it's us and Al and a couple of commissioners talk to the DOT about funding opportunities and stuff like that, so. That's all I had, so.
Do we need a motion to pay those bills or is, are we good then?
I, I think that's in the, in the bills already.
Got it.
It should have been in the resolution.
Okay.
Was it in the resolution?
It's, most of it is under House Bill fifteen oh five on the resolution.
Got it. Thank you.
Yep.
Okay, I am, I'm going to go down and bring up the Stark County Council on Aging.
Good morning, Commissioners. My name is Becky Russow. I am the president of the Stark County Council on Aging. And I know packets were presented to all of you at the August meeting, but we just wanted to come in today and just thank you. I know there are monies that are always reserved for the programs. And I just want to introduce your team. And that would be Sherry. And she is from Southwest District Health Unit. We have Colleen and her team from Elder Care. We have Kyle Klein, who is our treasurer, and John Bogner, who is our vice president. And then we also have quite a few people that represent all of our senior centers around Dickinson and the surrounding area. I just wanted to again really, truly thank all of you. I don't think you truly realize my father had passed away in me. And when you look at a family member who wants to stay at home, when you look at a family member who does not want to go into a nursing home or to a hospital and you have these people that are taking care of our families, our parents, our aunts and uncles, the disabled.
Someday us.
Yes, someday us, which we hope is our children, but we never know. So I just wanted to give you some, some points that I think many of us forget when we don't have to call them every day. So from Southwest District Health Unit, they provide medication setup, foot care, other medical services in homes that allows the elderly to stay in their homes longer. The nurses provide opportunities to check on the elderly to make sure they're safe and taken care of. Not all of us are with our parents in the same town that they live in. That's very important. The services are now donation-based and of course money's coming from the city of Dickinson and Stark County. Elder Care, Dickinson Public Transit, they help seniors remain independent and how important being independent is. When a senior can still do things and think on their own and be able to go places, they thrive. They live longer. Again, they're independent in their homes and they're there for as long as possible. Public transit provides safe, low-cost transit services to many who cannot own or operate a vehicle. That's just not Elder Care. Those are the disabled. Those are others that don't have a vehicle. Both services bring people together to socialize and maintain a sense of well-being. That well-being, again, being just a really emphasized word. As we all age, we, we lose partners and friends. Socializing independence assists all of us with a better quality of life. So I guess in summary, and again for me to thank all of you, this is such as, such an important, important program. Those teams use those monies to the best of their abilities to make sure they reach as many people as possible. Those are many people that we know, loved ones that we have, loved ones that we've lost. And I just want to again thank you from the bottom of my heart and for all those that are working for everybody in the city and Stark County and the surrounding areas. Do any of you have any questions from the packets that were handed out in August? John, do you have anything? Okay, thank you.
I'd just like to say thank you to you and your team. Many of them I know, the smiling lady in the back. You guys do really good work. And I know many of you are just plain old volunteers too. So, you know, you come here to thank us, but really we should be thanking you. So keep up the good work.
Thank you very much. I know the team, and especially during COVID, they reinvented things because they know they were really needed. So I guess whatever challenge they have, they stand up. Thank you.
Good job.
Thank you very much. And thank you to the whole team. Okay, we're going to skip down. I don't see. Um, zero vision? Vision, vision zero? I'm struggling today. Nicole?
They can plug it in. This flash drive or like computer?
She just has a flash.
Sorry, I'm new here.
That's okay.
There you go. Try that one.
Sorry for the trouble.
You're fine.
I thought when that come up, that was what you plugged in.
That's just ours.
All right, good morning, everyone. My name is Teresa Leepch. I'm the Vision Zero Coordinator for the Southwest region of the state. I was here, I think, over a year ago presenting to you about this new position and the new program. And I want to share with you what we've been doing in the past year and a half and what we've accomplished. So you can go to the next slide there. For our schools with our, our youth, we do a program called Buckle Up with Bucky. This is just a short little storybook of a seatbelt. It's a rhyming book, so it's pretty engaging for kids. And the presentation is about thirty minutes long. And one of the cool things that we have for a visual aid for those kids is we have a wooden ramp and we send a car with a ping pong ball, ping pong ball down that ramp and the ping pong ball flies out. And then we send it down again, but with a Velcro strap over that ping pong ball and it stays in place. And so the kids get a really good idea of why it's important to wear their seatbelt. And it's really fun and kids often even tell on their parents and tell them to buckle up after they take this presentation. So it's one of my, one of my favorites. So you can go to the next slide. Then we have our Impact Team Drivers presentation. This is also one of my favorite presentations. This is aimed towards our high schoolers. It shares two stories of teens that have died in car crashes. Nothing about drugs or alcohol. It's all just poor decisions teens have made behind the wheel. This presentation is about forty-five to sixty minutes long. And I really like when I have a North Dakota Highway Patrol or an SRO with me to answer questions at the end. And students get really engaged. And these presentations work. And we know they work because we send out a survey to the students before the presentation. And then we have them fill out that same survey after the presentation. And we see a change in behavior in the decisions that they plan to make moving forward after taking this survey and after listening to this presentation. So far, we've reached over two thousand students. And in the Southwest region, we've reached eight hundred and sixty-three, and we're hoping to grow those numbers as well. I'm working with the SRO here in Dickinson to try and get into Dickinson schools too. So you can go to the next slide. These are some of our tools that we have. We have our Fatal Vision goggles. Those are the drunk goggles. They impair people's vision. So we will go to state tournaments and, and have these goggles and kids can come and, and try them on. And it's a good conversation starter for those kids. Then we have the Sydney Go-Kart. It stands for Simulated Impaired Driving Experience. And what this go-kart does is we, we set up an obstacle course for the kids. They go through that go-kart, the obstacle course once. And then that second time around, we have a remote control and we, we impair the go-kart. And the go-kart doesn't respond to the students if they try to brake, if they try to turn a certain way. It, it doesn't listen to them and they end up crashing into cones and it's kind of scary for them. And afterwards, we, we talk with the students and we say, okay, what went through your mind as you crashed to that cone or, or that dummy that we had set up? And they're like, I was terrified. And, and it's more interesting even talking to the passenger of that go-kart because they have no control whatsoever of the situation. So they're, they're even more terrified than the driver. And so that helps us hit at home that it's never okay to get into a car with a drunk driver. Then we have our drunk driving simulator. That's the computer looking thing with the steering wheel. That shows what driving drunk is like as well. And so kids will, will have like, it's like a, a whole experience. They'll be coming from the bar. And then they'll try to drive and they aren't able to drive well at all. It's, it's pretty realistic. So it has pedals as well that, that aren't pictured in that. Then we partner with the North Dakota Highway Patrol with the rollover simulator. It shows what a rollover crash looks like at thirty miles per hour. And it's a really good conversation starter. I was down in Weshick with this rollover simulator. And it's surprising how many people will admit that they do not wear their seatbelts most of the time. And so this was, this is always a really good conversation starter, especially those in those rural areas. And the last thing pictured is our drunk driving go-karts. It's similar to the Sydney. But people put on the drunk goggles and then they try to steer in these pedal go-karts and they end up crashing into things as well. So all of these are used to start a conversation and bring awareness to people about why it's important to always drive sober, always buckle up, things like that. Another thing that we have started to do for schools is called Vision Zero Schools. We started this in Flasher last year. We, it's a peer-to-peer program, so I met with the student council and asked them to choose five student leaders, kids that were involved in sports or had a high impact on their peers. And from there, we created public service announcements. The cool thing about this program is it's not me or the teachers telling the students to drive safe. It's the students themselves encouraging their peers to make safe decisions behind the wheel every time they get behind the wheel. So we held a school assembly for the kids. And then we had one of the student leaders, Jace, speak with the students at this school assembly about why it's important to make safe decisions behind the wheel. And then we presented them a banner just saying Buckle Up Bulldogs. And so we hung that banner at the entrance of the school so that as the kids are leaving school, they have that reminder, buckle up every single time they get behind the wheel. This is also a, a program we're wanting to continue to grow, so I'm also doing this in Wing. But I think in the long run, we want every school to be a Vision Zero school. For our community engagement, all of us coordinators are CPS technicians. And so we help out with car seat checks in our communities. And then one of our, our cool events that we've done on the past two years is called Click It for Coffee. And people go through the drive-through at these coffee shops. And if they're wearing a seatbelt, they get a discount off their coffee. And then they also get a coupon for the next time they come in. And we'll have law enforcement at these events. So at first, when they're coming through the drive-through, they're kind of scared because they see a, a police officer in the drive-through. But when they realize it's, it's for seatbelt use and, and a positive thing, they're, they're really receptive. And, and we've received really good feedback from the community members on this event. Here are the partnerships that we have specifically in the Southwest region. We have a really good partnership with the High School Activities Association. So we're at all of our state basketball, hockey, volleyball tournaments, all of those sports we are at. Then we partner with the Bismarck Larks. We partner with the Battlelands Big Sticks, DSU, Dakota Speedway. This past year, we just partnered with North Dakota Country Fest and offered ten dollars off Lyft rides for that. So it's, it's kind of the same as Vision Zero Schools. It's not Vision Zero's message. It's, it's the Bismarck Larks message, telling their fans that they want to, them to get home safe every time. And the, and the Battlelands Big Sticks, that we just started a partnership with them this past year. So if any of you were at their games, you might have heard a Vision Zero message. Like if, I think it was, what, if someone scored a homerun, they're like, we want you to get home safe too. Kind of thing like that. I think, yeah, that's all I have for that one. And then if you know of any expos or conferences that, that you think we could be a part of, we're happy to have a booth there with Vision Zero information and with our Fatal Vision goggles just to bring awareness about Vision Zero, because there's still a lot of people who don't know what we're about. And then here are stats from this year compared to last year. We're up more than fifty-two fatalities. This was from two weeks ago. But in August, we had, this year, we had fifty-two fatalities compared to last year. We had sixty-six fatalities in August. Our seatbelt use rate has skyrocketed. We are at sixty-seven percent of our fatalities not being buckled at the time of the crash. So we have so much to work, so much work to do on, on seatbelt use. It's, it's like one of our biggest issues. I think we are the second highest, lowest seatbelt use, use rate in the nation. So always. Yeah. And then this year, we've had twelve motorcycle fatalities. And I know that number is higher as well after two weeks ago. So some concerning numbers this year, but there's just a lot of work to do in that. Any questions on those stats or anything like that?
So how do partnerships work?
How do partnerships work?
I mean, is there, I mean, because there's a hand-in-hand holding situation there.
Right.
So what does one put up and what does the other one put up?
So we, like with our contract with the Big Sticks, we'll offer like a certain amount of money. And because this position is housed by North Dakota Association of Counties, they help with the funding for that too. And so we'll, we'll offer a certain amount of money. We'll come up with a contract. And then we'll just tell them what, what we want and then they'll tell us how much that's going to cost. Does that answer the question or were you thinking of something else?
I guess I just was wondering how partnerships work. So no, I mean, maybe it answered it. I guess I didn't know what kind of answer I was gonna get.
Oh, okay.
Because I didn't know what to expect for an answer.
Right, okay, sounds good. But yeah, that most of our partnerships, we pay a certain amount of money and then go from there on the contract.
Teresa, just a quick question. I think it would probably fall under your Impact Team thing.
Yes.
How do you incorporate the don't text and drive scenario? I, that's something that I see is, is just exploding. I drive in the town in the mornings in between seven and eight and people who are coming east into that sunlight. I mean, everybody's looking down. No one's looking at the wheel. Everybody's looking down.
That is so true.
How, how do you, how is that incorporated in your program?
That's a really good question. One of the very first things we ask in this presentation, we don't even start off like we're talking about safe driving. We just ask a question, what do you consider lethal? Some students don't even know what that means, so then we break it down on what lethal means, like deadly. And so kids will come up with like, oh, drugs are deadly, swords are deadly, guns are deadly. And then I'll bring up, okay, well, what about lip gloss? Could lip gloss be deadly? And they're like, no, no, lip gloss could not be deadly. But then I go into, okay, well, what if you're driving and you take out your lip gloss and you're, you're putting it on and you're not looking at the road and you're just looking in the mirror trying to put your lip gloss on? Like, could that be lethal? And they're like, yeah, that could be lethal. So we, we break it down to not, it's not even phones. It's, it could be chapstick. It could be something you're drinking. It could be something you, you see off in the distance on the road. So we tackle texting and driving in a, in a non-direct way, but we, we do cover it in, in the presentation on how distractions, even as simple as chapstick, can.
Well, just amazing, the distance somebody can travel in a short amount of time, like two seconds, five seconds, that you might take your eyes off the road to do something distracted and the distance that you've already traveled.
Exactly, yeah. And, and one of the stats we share is if you're shooting someone a text, that's like driving the length of a football field blindfolded, if you're driving fifty-five miles per hour. So we share stats like that for kids to understand why, why it's really important to keep your eyes on the road. And this is what we have coming up. We're going to be at Big Iron next week. We're working on a contract with Husfest in Minot. And then this week, starting tomorrow, we are meeting with Kelly Browning. She's the founder of Impact Team Drivers and we're going through a two-day training with her on fine-tuning our presentation skills. And I'm really excited about that. And then we're working on Vision Zero Schools with Wing. So that's what we have coming up in the Southwest region.
So I have another question for you.
Yeah.
So I mean, you, you have motorcycle fatalities and stuff on there. Have you ever thought about partnering up with Abate of North Dakota, which does all the motorcycle education in the state? And have you ever discussed that with Janet or the gal there?
I know, I know Lonnie at Abate in Bismarck.
Executive Director, I think, yeah.
Yes, and he, he does his own classes and, and helps people. That's a really good question. I haven't looked too far into it. I went to Abate this past year just to like see what it was like and see what the classes were like. But I haven't gone far with a contract. So if you have ideas about what I could do, I'm, I'm more than open to them.
If you already know Lonnie, I think that'd be a, a really good partnership between the two just for them to push your product when they have their classes and stuff.
Yeah, I agree. Yeah. Okay.
You talked about Wing?
Yes.
And like on the Southwest side, you had talked about getting in with Dickinson. And how about the small schools surrounding? Have you got any, have you made any contact with any of them?
I've had contact with New England. I think the, the hard part is I'll, I'll email teachers or I'll, I'll get a phone call. And then I'll try to follow up and I don't hear back. And I think it might be because everyone's busy or things are, other people have other things to worry about. But I've noticed that I'll, I have to, if a school seems interested, I have to be very proactive in making contact with those schools. But I'm, I know New England has expressed interest, but other than that, I haven't had too many reach out.
Okay.
If you know of schools that you think would be good, I'm more than happy to, to reach out to them and see.
Okay.
So this is, this last slide is how the funding works. We get our funds from the DOT. It goes to the North Dakota Association of Counties and then it goes to each of our respective counties. So we're all county employees. But this is how, how the funds work. And then that is the breakdown of all the counties that we are in charge of. So any questions on that or any questions in general on the rest of the, of the presentation?
I'd, I'd have a question. Part of the Vision Zero, I see they're putting these guardrails up on interstate. Is that part of Vision Zero? And I see now the DOT on all the rural highways are putting up delineators. I'm, is that, is that part of Vision Zero? And was, the director, Bill Panos, has now resigned and, and wasn't he a real big push on, on Vision Zero?
Yes, yes. Bill Panos was a huge push on Vision Zero. But I don't think we foresee anything changing with Vision Zero. It's still a really good program, whether we get a, a new director and it's not Bill, that's okay. Vision Zero still is really important and it has reached tons of people. As for the guardrails, we are very indirectly associated with that. We just hear about it and then we're given information to share with the community, but we don't really have a say in what goes on in all of that. And I note, I think I saw a post on Facebook last week that they're, they're actually pausing the delineator project until next year. I think because they've, they've had a little bit of pushback from the agriculture community, which is understandable. So we'll see what happens with that in the future with our, with our new director as well.
Teresa, are you guys available for stuff on the weekends tours or just weekdays?
Yes, we do help out with things on the weekends. I know in the summer, we've been really, really busy. So we've had to say no to some things, but we are available on the weekends if, if it's something that we think it's really important to do. For sure.
So do you have a contact that you can leave with some of us, like with probably Sheriff Lee might want your contact to set something up with you or?
Absolutely, yes. Yeah, that sounds good.
I guess it's right up there on the screen right now.
Any other questions? Thank you all very much.
Thank you. One more, just one more question. When you come into communities, then do you look for like volunteers? Do you need volunteers in communities when you put things on?
Sometimes, yes, we do, especially with the Sydney. Or we'll, we'll be happy to partner with like public health or anybody like that. But sometimes with the Sydney, we'll need helpers just to like reset up cones or things like that. But even, I mean, Vision Zero's all of, it's not just safe driving related. It's, it's including everybody. It takes everybody to drive safe, so.
Sure.
We're happy to take anybody.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah.
Planning and zoning, Mr. Josephson.
Thank you, Commissioner Arthad. Good morning, Commissioner Steve Josephson.
Morning.
Planning and zoning. Last, last Thursday, September first, the Planning and Zoning Commission met and they had one, one application appeared before them and it was Phil. Uh, Phil Wallace is re- was request, is requesting a rezoning from agriculture to rural residential. And it's on a a twenty-acre parcel. It's located on the county line. It's on Thirty Street and a hundred and Ninth Avenue. And uh, it's part currently part of a hundred and sixty acre piece. They wanna rezone to rural residential. The family has someone on on, they're trying to sell that piece of property and apparently there's somebody who's interested in this. Uh, both the Planning and Zoning Commission and staff recommended approval. Uh, in according to the findings in the staff report and I'm here to answer any questions you may have about this.
If there are no questions, negative motion, please.
I'll make a motion to approve RZ eleven dash twenty-two. For Philip Wallace is requesting rezoning from agricultural residential in a parcel of twenty acres.
Second.
Proved and seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you, Steve.
Thank you. I'll notify the applicant this morning.
Okay.
Thank you very much.
Okay, and we will go into a fifteen-minute break.
And then we also did last week hire a regional council coordinator who will manage the day-to-day operations of the regional council. Um, so we did present some short-term goals. Um, our regional council had um, been removed from the EDA funding that happens yearly to help with operations. And so we did just receive a hundred thousand dollars from the EDA as a short-term planning grant until we can get back in that funding cycle. With them, so we did receive news on Wednesday, um, that we did receive that award. Um, part of a regional council is you have to complete a certified economic development plan every five years for the region. So we represent Adams, um, Stark, Billings, Dunn, Hettinger, Slope. Golden Valley and Billings Counties, those eight counties. And so part of that is we will complete a strategic plan for those eight counties and that has to be done every five years in order to receive EDA funding. So we are just beginning the the planning for that. And so that will involve um. Planning meetings with each of the counties, just discussing where we wanna go in the future. Um, and putting that into a a strategic plan that goes to the EDA. We'd also like to pursue state funding. This is something I've been discussing with the other regional councils across the state. There are eight of us. And they are not currently state-funded. And so as part of the community and economic development uh, boots on the ground. We do feel like this would some be something that the state could consider funding for, so we will be making that proposal this next legislative session as well. Um, we are kind of, this first couple months has really been transitioning. There wasn't. There wasn't a current administrator in place. She had resigned a number of months back. So just kind of getting things transitioned over. But we are, we're getting our hands around the CDBG funding, EDA. And then Roosevelt Custer also has three lending pools that can go out directly to businesses for generating employees is the intent. They want to help small businesses grow in the region. So we do actually have three lending pools available. There's only currently one loan out. And so we would like to reengage those lending pools, get those out to the businesses and really work with lenders and economic developers in these eight counties to get that money out. We'd like to create an action plan for this next year with our board of directors. We do have board representation from each of the eight counties. I do know the city of Dickinson has a spot on that, as well as Ryan Gillick sits on our board of directors. We'd like to get the website up today, just some organizational management, get the programs up and going again. And then we just, we'd like to talk about the future of Roosevelt Custer and what we'd like to see. I know that in our eight-county region, tourism is something that we've discussed. And how do the eight counties benefit from our regional tourism? Workforce development, obviously, in the eight counties with the new CTE Center. How do we, how do we get that impact out into the eight counties? And then just talk about some region-wide marketing. We think that southwest North Dakota has a lot of potential to market together. That's one thing. I've been in economic development 15 years. This region works better together than a lot of regions across the state. So how do we do that? So other than that, I just wanted to come out and introduce ourselves. We are getting out to all the counties, just saying hi, showing our faces. And then we will continue to take our board meetings around the region and just talk about each, how we can help in each county. So, yeah, I know Dean sits on our board of directors. I've visited with Neil a couple of times. And so, yeah, we're excited about what we can do.
So like now you missed this grant or whatever, you missed out on, and you got $100,000. And you're going to start this development map or whatever you want to.
Correct.
So now, next, I mean, you've got five years to put it together? Or do you have to have it done before that?
We have to have it completed by spring of 2023.
Because that's when you would have to apply for the next grant.
Grant cycle, correct. So it's a three-year grant cycle. So we got a short-term grant till we can get into that grant cycle. Yeah, so we have to have match for those grant dollars. It's a one-to-one match. And so that's why we do go out and ask the counties to participate in that. And so we did send a participation letter. We did not increase the amount. I do believe Stark County was at about $33,000 this last year. And so we did keep those numbers the same. But each county does pay in to the regional council as a member.
I think too, so just kudos for you guys. They're taking, like I said, the Roosevelt Regional Custer has kind of been the, neglected or abandoned. And so what they're tackling is a two-year project in about six months. And if, if, if they get it done, awesome, because it needs to be a functioning servicing entity.
I agree with you.
Yep, and so it's, it's, but I just, so she didn't give herself enough credit because of the, what they're, the task that they're tackling right now.
We do have a really energetic team in our office that is excited about opportunity. I will say one thing, speaking on behalf of my, the Bowman County Development Corporation Board, we support region. We are stronger if Dickinson is stronger. We are stronger if Adams County is stronger.
Absolutely.
We fully believe that, and that's why my board was so supportive of this. We, you know, the CTE Center benefits all of us. The library going in in Midora, that benefits all of us. And so if we can work together and utilizing those resources, we are all stronger.
What are the eight counties again?
So we've got.
Counting them on our fingers, I watch.
Oh, guys.
Dunn County, Stark County, Headinger, Adams, Bowman, Billings, Golden Valley, and Slope.
Okay, thank you.
Yes. So Roosevelt Custer is a nonprofit. They're, you know, federal organizations. They do receive federal funds. Some, several states, they do get state funding as well. But they, you know, I know in COVID happened, a lot of these stepped in and really helped these communities with community development, economic development, helped the businesses get back on their feet. So they did each receive a million dollars as part of that. And, you know, we would like to be a part of, you know, if there are more funds down the road, you know, making sure we are eligible. I do know there was some EDA funding specific for coal counties. And I don't believe we were eligible to apply because we were not in compliance. So, yes, we have hit the ground running, just trying to get, at least get back in compliance so we can make sure that those funds can roll back into our region.
So the old board, the board that was in existence, they just kind of dissolved and then were just?
They were meeting, I'm not sure how often, but.
We had a director that really didn't have the experience to do the grants. Instead, we weren't doing any new loans or anything on that. And there was a transition for another firm that had taken it over. You know, it was a consulting firm type thing. It was some things that got missed.
There are a lot of requirements and a lot of, you know, federal requirements that I think just over time got missed. And so really working on, the EDA has, I will say, has been the best entity for us to work with, which is, is impressive. I wasn't expecting that. But they've really worked hard to get us back up and going. So that's been really nice. But, yeah, we're excited, very excited. I will say Ryan has been extremely supportive. And so that's been a good ally for us as well.
He is.
But, yeah, I just wanted to introduce us. If you do have things, I know Neil reached out, and we're working with the other regional councils just to see what we can do. And I guess the sky is the limit as far as we're concerned. And we really want to build this right, so.
I can tell you want to hit the ground running.
Yeah, we do.
That's great.
Yeah, okay.
Thank you for taking this on.
Yeah, absolutely. Thank you very much.
The Highway 22 safety issue. Mike LaFourn and Ed Dick are on the agenda, but I don't believe they're not here. And Al, could you catch us up on that, please?
That's, that's been a long history of trying to get turn lanes at the fairgrounds. I know the DOT has their criteria, has to meet certain criteria to put them in. I had conversations last week with Rob Rayhorn. They got a formula. I know we were able to get a pass-through lane. I don't know if any of you have been out there since it's been paved. If you want to make a left-hand turn into the fairgrounds and somebody's making left, you can pass on a right-hand side. But there is not a dedicated right-hand turn lane if you're heading northbound. Or there probably should be one at the contested entrance. I don't really know much more we can do. We've had lots of, Lisa had lots of conversations with them. I've had conversations, last year when the session was in session, I visited with Jay Elkins to see if he could try and push something along. I don't know, we ended up with that pass-through lane. So whether he was instrumental or not, but I don't know where to go. You know, the old saying is squeaky wheel gets the most grease. So I think, I don't know where to push it to. I mean, I thought we've tried everything and I don't know. I think one of the real big issues is in the wintertime, there's an extra pass or two with the snowplow. That probably could be some hindrance, but I don't, I just, like I said, we've tried about everything we can, and I know they're concerned about it. I think there's other concerns. There's a lot of traffic comes and goes out of that place. I mean, like Saturday night, I was just lucky the sheriff was out there to kind of direct the traffic coming and going. So I don't know where to go with it. It would be nice to have them. And if not all of you are on the board, but I remember back when we built the fairgrounds, I says, "We have all the dirt in the world, guys. Let's put turn lanes in." But it's got to be approved by the DOT. If they're not going to approve it and not going to support it, I don't know where else we can go with it unless we.
And what's the DOT's, I mean, what's the district engineer's response to the request?
Well, he says that lots of people want them. But, I mean, if they give us one there, then this person's going to want one for there and there. And there's a criteria that they have, traffic, lots of other different engineering rules that they, that they follow, so.
So there's an accident?
Well, I mean, that could happen. That's always a concern of, you know, the traffic coming in from, from the, heading, heading northbound into town. Heading southbound, not paying attention. Southbound will be better now because you can get over. It's a dedicated left-hand turn lane. They call it a pass-through. So that'll be better, but it's, it's the right-hand turn lanes, acceleration lanes leaving. So I.
For the amount of money they spent to do that, it just seems like a job half-done.
And we'd have provided the dirt right there for them. So. I guess maybe we got to go to the legislation and see if we can get one put in. I don't know.
Okay.
Thank you.
Do you, do you have any, on a contact, on a first-contact information? I mean, do you have?
Well, you'd have to start out with the, with the local engineer. You know, he's in charge here and then push it up the flagpole, but.
Okay. Okay. Thanks. Stark County Historical Society, Tyler Shook.
Commissioners, thank you.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Still morning.
Still morning, barely, yeah. No, you guys have been doing a good job. Thank you. So a couple of things, updates on the society, what we got going on. Attendance has been strong. Attendance so far this year is, and I apologize, I, technology, I guess, is not my strong suit either. So I would have had more, but this is what I got for you today. So far, it looks like we have had, year-to-date, 7,900 people come through the museum. About 5,000, 5,100 adults. You won't have that up there. Compared to last year, we had a total of 2021 attendance of 19,777. You guys supported some of our projects last year. We really appreciate that. One of them was the repainting, scraping, cleaning, some siding repairs, and repainting of Pioneer Machinery Hall. If you haven't had a chance to see it, it's just a few blocks north. It's, looks amazing. Currently, on the other side of that, the city's working with Wynn on doing some, on the backside of it, they're doing some different landscaping and do some drainage stuff and pour some concrete to keep. The way that was built, there's just, you know, they got to do some different drainage around it to help so that that doesn't become an issue again. We did some inside repairs. There is, on the dinosaur side, well, if you didn't see the Facebook page or you haven't had a chance to see it, in October, not that that was a county thing that was, you know, any of your guys' budget, but something that's definitely happened in the community. We used a helicopter to lift a T-Rex out of a site, picked it up. It was pretty cool. It was on the news. It was interesting. I was there. I'll tell you, the amount of wash underneath that is amazing. How much wind there is underneath, you know, a big twin rotor helicopter like that. So it was interesting. That's back, they're working on prep. Catalogue collections is going good. Last year, you guys funded or started funding. Now, by the time we got that budget, it sounds like a DSU. We have a couple applicants who are interested in that position. Probably going to be a history student or somebody, since it's a part-time, you know, 20-hour-a-week deal. Hopefully going to get somebody in that position this semester. I talked to the director this morning about it. So that funding will start, you know, hopefully we'll start paying that out soon. We get that person in. We're up to, I looked this morning, I think it's almost 48,000 catalogued images on our website now. We still have someone working about 20 hours a week. They kind of work whenever they want. So they might work 40 this week and take the next week off. But doing that, we also have a volunteer now that's helping, so that helps. It's always good to have one paid and one volunteer, you know, they increase productivity. So there's just a lot going on at the museum. It seems to be that a lot of people are interested in it. There's still good attendance. I would say attendance this year is a little bit lower. I think with COVID, it seems like, you know, last year, everyone stayed really close local. Now people are going on further away trips. But attendance is still strong realistically. So this year, I have my budget up there. We're asking for roughly the same amount of money. This year, we want to do, so we have the farmhouse, which came from down by, kind of by New England, I guess, south of Regent, between Regent and New England. That was painted in 2012, I believe, last time. This time, we're going to do a full scrape, do some more siding repairs and paint it, along with some porch repairs. It's got a front and a rear porch, so they'll do some of that stuff. So we're looking for the same amount of money, some collection stuff, and to continue with that collections cataloguer. So is there any questions? And sorry, I didn't get this to you earlier. I've been combing and then.
That's okay.
It's one, one thing that when I do get customers from out of town and things to do, I always try and send them up to the dinosaur museum because it's really a gem in our community that a lot of people don't recognize.
Thank you. Yeah, we're proud of it. It's, it's really come a long ways and it continues to grow, you know. And having young paleontologists who are still doing field research and, you know, pulling the stuff out, what we're finding is amazing. Any other questions?
Nope, good.
Thank you for your time.
You.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Joanna Percy.
Good morning. I have the policy. I'm Joanna Percy, Human Resources Director. The policy on inclement weather and emergency closings. This really is not a new policy. What I did is put it in a policy format to clarify mainly the compensation piece of it. We worked all of this out, actually, in April when this happened and we had the emergency closings. So the, the, the main things, like I talked about, is the guidelines on closing decisions and communication. The one thing that kind of became apparent is if we could try to make a decision by 6:30 a.m., that might help some of our employees, because I know like the road department, that's when they start work. So it's helpful. The earlier that we decide to do those things is in there. And also on compensation, we put examples for those people that typically do have to come back into work during closures. When they work during hours, we would compensate them as normal. In addition, they would get annual leave time for the amount of hours that they come into, up to eight hours. And then we have some sleeping examples, because we had some employees that had to stay overnight and sleep. And then, you know, those employees that do shift work too. So we have those examples in there. Did anyone have any questions that came up?
Just a couple, Joanna.
Yeah.
First of all, based on our actions in the previous two meetings, so department heads would be excluded from this policy. I mean, if they're exempt, I guess that's under the compensation port part of it.
Right, right.
If you could explain how that would function.
Right, right. So, so basically, you know, we would, we would continue people's compensation if we were closed, no matter if they're exempt or non-exempt. And so, like, for instance, in our time cards, they would get regular work hours, you know, due to closure. Mm-hmm, yeah. And with exempt employees, they don't have to put their hours into a time card. So it would just be their regular.
And that's the point I'm making is somewhere, somewhere in here, I read something where there's some kind of additional provision if someone would come in on a weekend or something.
Right, right. Okay, so if they come in while, during the regular hours of their normal work, then they get PTO added to their bank, okay? But if they come in like after-hours, like on-call type thing, then they get compensated at time and a half. So that would be your non-exempt people.
Right, so if a department head, if the courthouse is closed on Friday and a department head comes in to make up time on Saturday, that's not part of this compensation?
Not if they're exempt.
Okay.
Yeah.
And then one other question, sorry. And then, one other question, sorry. I lost it. I wrote something down, but I'll think of it.
Okay.
So on the compensation, how are, if I am understanding that right, they get the, if they do come in and work anyway, they receive the number of hours that they worked that day?
In vacation time. Yes, they get paid their regular hours, and they would get PTO or vacation time added to their bank for coming in and working. And that's how it was written in the policy handbook.
If they're coming in to work anyway, I mean, because they came in to work, then we're still giving them vacation time?
Yes, because the buildings, I mean, are closed.
That's the way it's currently being?
Mm-hmm. Yeah, that's how it's currently written.
Is the point of that so that the people that are coming in that don't have the day off aren't getting penalized, because everyone else is at home not working and getting paid for that day because of it's a, it's a
Correct.
Exigent day off?
Yes, yes. And the intent is that they receive reasonable and equitable treatment for absences. So, you know, if someone's sitting at home getting paid, then the person that has to come in and work or do something gets something a bit extra for doing that.
So that comp, that that additional time is put to the PTO and not deemed overtime compensation?
Correct.
That was my other question.
Is there any other questions?
I'll make a motion to approve the inclement weather and emergency closure policy.
I'll second it.
Any discussion? Roll call vote. Commissioner Messer?
Aye.
Commissioner Franchek?
Aye.
Commissioner Zander?
Aye.
Commissioner Marsh?
Aye.
Chair of votes, aye. Motion carried.
Thank you.
Indoor gun range. Commissioner Zander?
Well, I'm gonna take a pass on that, because the individuals that had contacted me are not here. So we can take it on.
I'm gonna come next time.
Who knows?
Okay. Any comment from the public? With that, I will ask for motion to adjourn.
I just wanted to ask a little bit about the special meeting of September 15. Is that correct?
Preliminary budget one?
Yeah. I've got a prior engagement for that, and so I'm just asking if there are any objections to rescheduling that, and what other dates might be available?
I also will be, have a, a prior engagement. If I have to, I can probably call in from the Denver Airport, but I don't know that anyone wants me to do that. So, just enough way.
Do we have any time restraints on when that needs to be completed, Karen?
Well, the final budget approval is the beginning of October. So if you, I just need to have some time to get everything together, I should say.
Do you have a suggested date, Ken? When, because I don't know what your conflict dates are. I know
I'm, I'll be back.
Conflict I have is the 20th with Stark Development at 10:30 a.m. I don't know if we'd be done by then or not.
Well, I don't have, we're talking September 15th now, and, you know, just for the sake of discussion, is the last week of September an issue for anybody?
We do have a public hearing at 9 a.m. that's already scheduled for the 15th that was put out on the estimated tax statements, just so the commission is aware.
So in order to change that, what would be the process? Can you change it?
I'm not really sure if you can change it, since it got mailed out to every resident in Stark County.
I mean, I think, I think you still can, as long as you have proper notice.
We just need a notice that probably in the paper, and then on our website and everything. So it, I mean, if I can change it, if it doesn't, that's not
You can change it.
Then I would recommend probably the 20th, if you would be okay with that. The 20th?
Can we be done by 10:30?
Oh, is that when you have another meeting?
I have Stark Development at 10:30. So unless we come in a little early.
I won't be
What about the 21st?
21st works for me.
The later, the better for me.
Next week, does it work?
The week of the 26th would be ideal, but
I'd be good with
I guess in the future, we had planned this and sent the tax statements out, instead of a week notice of needing to cancel and reschedule, a little more notice would have been nice, since it was already in the tax statements. But
It's up to the commission.
If we're gonna move, 21st works for me.
21st is fine with me.
City Planning is only at seven, so we're usually done by about 8:30. So it's up to be after that.
Nine o'clock on the 21st?
Yep.
Is that what you're looking at?
Is that a motion, Neil? I'm sorry. I, I would move that we meet at, move the preliminary budget meeting from September 15th to September 21st at 9 a.m. I'll second it.
Kane, with this being a public hearing, we'll just get it out right away, Karen, and get it out a few times?
Yeah.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I'm opposed, but that's when it'll be. Motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Meeting adjourned.